We'll call the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four board meeting. Join me on the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. Continuing on, we have time in our meeting that we have public comments. Anybody that'd like to address the board on something that's not on the agenda this morning? Now's the time. Please come up, identify yourself. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello and good morning to you all. My name is Kelly Wilkinson. I'm a licensed professional clinical counselor and a crisis therapist on the Carver County Crisis Team. I'm here today with the support of my team to bring to your attention a concern that we feel is too important not to address to you directly. The county's contract with Ridgeview Medical Center was not renewed for two thousand twenty-five. The Crisis Team was notified of this via email on October eighth. It stated in part, "We will pause any future hiring for the Crisis Team. HHS leadership is currently assessing the impact of the loss of this contract on the crisis program and is determining next steps. The county will continue to engage with you as further details emerge." Despite reaching out to leadership within the county, there have been no further updates. It is our concern that the Crisis Team will be discontinued or contracted out. We feel that this would be detrimental to the community. The Crisis Team currently has thirteen full-time staff, which consists of social workers, crisis therapists, a case aide, a healthcare navigator. One of our crisis therapists is designated as a stabilization therapist, and she works to help support clients and their families after an assessment until they are established and safe in our communities. When a resident calls our crisis line, they will reach one of our social workers, who are skilled in providing mental health support and therapeutic intervention over the phone. People call with a variety of concerns for themselves or a loved one, whether it's depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, psychosis, or abnormal behavior, just to name a few. The social workers do the first initial risk assessment to determine if a crisis assessment is needed. The crisis therapists then go to the client in real time, wherever in the county they are. Locations range from clients' homes, clinics, schools, the county jail, JDC, the courthouse, or other public areas. We assess for safety and risk, and we work with the client and their families to determine the best way to support them. We can refer them to our stabilization therapist, who can help connect them to other mental health services that they may need, or other county or public programs. Our healthcare navigator can help with applications for health insurance, get clients to food shelves if needed, or get to their other mental health appointments. Our social workers also help in the Carver County Dispatch by monitoring mental health calls and offering collaboration and support for the nine-one-one operators. So far this year, our staff has answered over fifty-two hundred calls from the community. The Crisis Team collaborates with a multitude of the Carver County programs, such as the Mental Health Clinic for Street Center, school-linked therapists, the schools within the county, Sheriff's Office, Chaska Police Department, the jail, JDC, adult protection, child protection, children's and adults, case management, and probation, just about every unit in Carver County. We answer the after-hour child protection calls and coordinate with their on-call staff. We also assess and complete the pre-admission screening for residents needing skilled nursing, which is a federal mandate. Our team has averaged almost four hundred community-based assessments annually in Carver County. We believe this number will only rise now with our increased availability. This would be the first time that we would truly be a community-based crisis team, which is what all of the other teams in Minnesota are. Our team is truly remarkable. The longevity on our team is something that is not commonly found. Staff ranging from twenty-six years of employment to our newest staff being hired six months ago. The average length of employment on our team is seven point eight years. Many of us have viewed this job as the job that we want to retire doing. We are a very creative and resourceful team with a variety of professional experiences and specialties. This only makes us stronger and motivated in creating new ways to engage with the community. We've built relationships with many other Carver County programs and community stakeholders. We pride ourselves that Carver County is still small enough of a county where we can connect clients to all of the things that they may be needing within the county. The speed in which we work and the way that we can wrap around a client to provide as much support as we can, it doesn't happen in the metro counties. We aren't sure of what the future holds for the Crisis Team, but we wanted to make sure that we came and voiced our concerns to you as our county commissioners in hopes that you will support the Crisis Team continuing with our important work. We hope it is clear that we are dedicated and passionate about the work that we do, the people that we help, and the community that we serve. We would like to extend an offer to meet with you, if you are willing, to discuss our concerns further. You can reach out to any of us listed below, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yep.
Good morning. My name is Jane Fleming. I live in Chaska. I've lived here for over twenty years, and I am a recent retire from Carver County Community Social Services. I am an LICSW, Licensed Independent Clinical Social Worker, so it means I'm a professional, seemed as a clinical therapist. I worked the last eight years in Carver County as a pre-petition screening for civil commitments, which, if you aren't familiar with what it is, it's really, for the residents of Carver County, it's responding sort of after a psychiatric emergency. We come in if further services is needed, if there needs to be a court order for continued psychiatric placement, mental health treatment. So I'm a mental health professional. Prior to the Adult Mental Health and Pre-Petition Screening Position, I worked on the Mobile Mental Health Crisis Team for about eight years. And I do have to say it was one of my most favorite positions. It was a huge learning curve for me. I'd been a school-based social worker prior to that and other jobs earlier in my career. Both with my Adult Mental Health Pre-Petition Screening Position and with my Mobile Crisis Mental Health Position, it was constant community work. The mental health area, I mean, there's a plethora of services and interaction with clinics and schools and going in people's homes and, I mean, working with veterans. So when I heard about the possibility of what could happen to the Crisis Team or that it might not be here was very concerning to me. Have to breathe. I just believe that they're an integral part. I'm gonna tell you, one day, when I left Carver County, I realized how busy I had been all those years. Go, 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 go. And really didn't realize it at the time, especially actually the Mobile Crisis Program. I can tell you, one day, as an example, and this went on for years, there was an infant who passed away, who died, and there was concerns in the family about the well-being of the parents. So Melanie sent us there. We went and met with that family. From there, I went to Ridgeview ER where there was a severe, serious suicide attempt on a young adult female. From there, I went to a suicidal student out at Watertown High School. And this went on and on and on. The Crisis Team works collaboratively with local police and law enforcement. I go with a police officer to kind of the woods in a backyard in town, and he'd look at me and say, okay, what should we do? But often, they were the leads, too. So the work was immense. It was integral, just very involved in the community well-being, is what I found. So I guess I'm here to advocate for this program. These people are professionals. Great therapists. They're intimate, caring, knowledgeable, trained, compassionate. And I just hope that Carver County recognizes the importance of the Carver County Crisis Mobile Mental Health Team. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to say a few words this morning? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. One point three is the Agenda Review and Adoption.
Shall move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Seeing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item one point four, approve the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
Move to approve as presented. Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Udoman to approve the minutes. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries again unanimously. Community announcements. Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Last week, we got the opportunity to certify the election results. Chair Degler and myself, it was interesting to look at the statistics with Carver County, ninety-one percent of the people had voted. So roughly, voter registration that day was about seventy-seven thousand. And so Election Day ballots with the absentees, the Election Day ballots were about forty-one thousand, but the absentee ballots that were tabulated was just a little bit over twenty-eight thousand five hundred. So that was an interesting trend, and just want to give a thank you to Kendra and her team, and also Dave Fishman and his staff for making it another accurate election. Also, just some general community announcements. The Central Craft Fair fortieth Annual is taking place at Central High School. That's on November twenty-third. If you have the opportunity to come out and visit the high school and also St. John's Vendor Fair on the twenty-third, please do so. Also, the NYA Lions, their Christmas tree lot, as a current lion of the group, will open our lot on Friday, November twenty-ninth, for some fresh-cut trees at a very, very good price, and all those proceeds go back to the community. And just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are you cutting it a little bit close? Thanksgiving's the twenty-eighth, so you open up the tree lot the twenty-ninth? Let's keep it rolling. Okay. Other community announcements. Commissioner Lynch.
If I could, there were two notable deaths up in, one in Watertown, one in Waconia. One was Doris Burns, longtime resident Hollywood Township, and then into Watertown. Wonderful lady. Then also, Norm Hoffman passed away. I had the opportunity to go to his funeral. You can go to Johnson Funeral Home and read the obit. It's quite impressive. He led a really incredible life. And every time that anyone goes on Lake Waconia and you see the Coney Island, you know that he gifted that to the people of Carver County. He's really a great man. And then I'd also like to congratulate Mayor Lutheran Volleyball. They're the classy state volleyball champs for the fifth time. So congratulations to them.
They got quite a string there.
Yeah, they do.
They powerhouse.
Heck of a program.
Commissioner Udoman.
Mr. Chair, one of the fun events of the year is the event that they have, the middle school. Yourself, myself, others were there, and it's just a great opportunity for the kids to honor the veterans. They play their music, and they invite veterans to be there, and it's just a great event. They started outside and then moved inside. Also, to extend what Commissioner Fahy was saying about elections, congratulations to those that won and those that stepped into the arena to give it a go. Lisa's in the audience, so congratulations, Lisa, for that. We'll look forward to having you up here soon. Local theater's alive and well. I think this is the time to get your cheap theater fix. And I got a chance to go to see Annie with my family at Chaska High School. I know that Chan Hassan has theirs going on, and they're smattered across the county. I think for five bucks, you can go to local theater, and it's well worth it. And so if you can, take your kids out, become a tradition, kids, grandkids, et cetera. Eighty-Second Street started their efforts, which is super exciting. They're clearing trees there through the month of November. It might cause a little bit of interruption. The big interruptions will come soon. I'm looking at the folks from Victoria. Well overdue, needs to happen. It's gonna cause some pain, but I think it's about as abbreviated as it can be. And so to see that progress, we'll see more of that coming. I talked to some folks with Greater MSP, serve on that board for economic development and whatnot. Three active leads right now. Most of them are confidential, but all three of them are north of two hundred million dollars in value apiece. And so doing some good work there. I had the occasion to try and find new internet recently, and it's been interesting, because as I talk to different people, people are really excited about metro being in town, not just in the rural areas, but also in the city and other things. And we're on pace to be the first county with a hundred percent fiber by the end of this year. Early next year, we'll hear an update later, later this year from Randy. But really big things, and to actually be the person that's purchasing that, you look at it differently than making the decision. You say, yeah, we need that stuff. And so it's a good option for a lot of people in Carver County in making the internet accessible. Girls on the Run is a tradition of our family. My kid got a chance to participate along with a couple hundred people in Carver County. It's a program that's for sixteen weeks. Twice a week, the kids get a chance to compete physically, but also mentally and encouragement and whatnot. And then they culminate as a five K at the state fairgrounds. At the state fairgrounds. And so it was cool to see those kids out there, then also the parents that were instrumental in making that happen. And then finally, youth sports are alive and well. My kids play in travel basketball. They went three and O, so way to go Brooklyn and team. But you just look at the hours of dedications by the coaches and the parents to make that happen. And at the end of the day, it's really not about the sports. It's about bringing community together. And so super excited by the presence, particularly in the softball, baseball, and basketball sphere, to bring community together. So thank you.
I think it's good that you mentioned the fact that it's good that the kids and the parents get involved, but you also have to thank the coaches that put in the time to make programs like that happen. Commissioner Workman.
Nothing much, Mr. Chairman. Central High School out there in Norwood Young America, tough loss in the champion, not the championship, but on the way to the championship. Chan Hassan stormed, tough loss, two points on the way to the championship. Minnetonka Skippers, which is half a Chan Hassan, are in the championship, so we're all gonna root for them.
Maybe.
Oh, yeah. But I think that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you very much, yeah. No, I think you mentioned a good thing, that a couple of these football teams made it quite a ways, hate the end of the season, but everybody ends the season with a loss, except for that one final team. So November twenty-first, it's the National Smokeout Day. We don't talk about smoking as much as we used to. That used to be a big deal, but the National Smokeout Day is the day that people can somehow help maybe break that habit. So if you've got that habit that you're fighting, get the help that you need. And then finally, it was mentioned Thanksgiving is coming up, the twenty-eighth, Thursday. Around Thanksgiving this time of the year, a lot of nonprofits use this time of the year to raise a lot of contributions. So if you can and you're able, give to a nonprofit, because they do a lot of good work all year long. So with that, we move up to our item number two on our agenda. It's the Consent Agenda. This morning, we have sixteen, seventeen items on the agenda this morning. I will not read through them all. Anybody have something on the consent agenda that should be pulled separate? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as a one unit?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Fahy to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Commissioner Workman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna talk about county fees a little bit later, which is always an exciting part of my year here.
Highlight of the year.
And of course, usually the upward trend of fees, and I get that. I did ask Mr. Hemsey in a text yesterday what we're doing with our solid waste fees. And in the consent agenda is contracts for cardboard and batteries and all sorts of other stuff. It's pretty big numbers, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so that's half of it, and I'll discuss the rest later. But we are still taking on a lot of our county residents recycling and waste problems. And so, but we're gonna talk a little more later, and I just want to bring it up.
Well noted. That stuff doesn't just disappear. It has to go someplace, and there's a cost to removing it one way or another. Any other discussions?
Only that, if discussing the fee schedule is the highlight of your year, you must have a pretty dull year.
Let's keep it that way. Let's keep it that way. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item three point one, County Cannabis Retail Registration Ordinance. With that, we'll call Mr. Dave Fishman, Property and Finance Division Director. Mr. Fishman.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board members. Today, the agenda item is a county ordinance limiting cannabis retail businesses, otherwise known as dispensaries. So a high-level summary. You recall the legislature approved cannabis. They did hemp a few years ago, then cannabis in two thousand twenty-three. And the retail part of cannabis will be effective January first of two thousand twenty-five. We don't expect any businesses right away, but that'll be the earliest that could happen. The legislature gave the cannabis retail registration authority to cities and townships. It's their responsibility to manage this process unless they transfer it to the county. I have a slide. My next slide shows that all of the townships have transferred the authority, and the cities are thinking about it. You can, the legislature allowed, which is fairly unique, that you can limit the number of dispensaries based on population. So one per twelve thousand five hundred residents. And then there are some fees involved. It is the initial registration, five hundred dollars, a thousand annual renewal, and it's for the cannabis. It's also for the hemp that is now coming underneath the Office of Cannabis Management. And there is sales tax involved. There's an additional state sales tax on the cannabis products, and that gets shared back with the counties and cities. The state keeps a large portion, but it does get shared back with counties and cities. And then there are age verification, compliance checks that is similar to alcohol and tobacco that we're already doing, and that'll be conducted by law enforcement.
Before you go to the next slide, when do the cities have to make up their mind if they're gonna do it themselves or transfer it to the county?
There's no deadline. It's really, it's really in their hands. Once they, actually, my next slide will actually kind of help with that. But yeah, there is no deadline. They can, they can.
And once the townships have transferred that authority to us, can they ask for it back in the future?
That's my understanding, is that if they decide, you know, now as the slide shows, all the townships have transferred it over to us. One of them did ask about, can they get it back? And that was, the answer was yes. They, for now, the county will, when it's been transferred, the county will run it. And if at some point they wanna take it back and adopt their own ordinance and do it for themselves, they have that ability to do that. But for now, all the townships have transferred the authority to Carver County. A number of cities, we met with them in October, a number of cities said they were interested in transferring authority as well, but they were waiting to see if the county adopted an ordinance to limit the number of retailer, dispensaries in the county. Their biggest concern was the county has an overall limit of ten, based on our population, one hundred and thirteen thousand. And they were concerned that all ten of those, based on the county ordinance, could end up in one city. Whereas if they kept it for themselves, they could adopt their own ordinance, and then they could use the one per twelve thousand five hundred, which would mean Chan Hassan, Chaska, for example, could have a limit of three. So by transferring it, they were concerned we're going from a maximum of three, if we kept it, to a maximum of ten, if we came underneath the county's ordinance. As it turned out, we were able to create an ordinance that will allow the county to actually limit the number of dispensaries within each city, within each township, based on the city's population or the township's population. So we have the same, this number would be the same for Chan Hassan and Chaska if they transferred it to the county, based on the ordinance that is in front of the board today. And then we'll, so a number of cities have said they're interested. We haven't heard from all of them. Waconia is the one that said they plan on keeping the registration authority. They already processed tobacco and alcohol licenses and felt they can just do that as well with their staff that they have. So in terms of that ordinance that I was just mentioning, limiting the number of dispensaries, I mentioned the overall number of ten. That's based on the state statute, but we can only, we can only limit it to ten by ordinance for the county. So we do have to adopt the ordinance or limit it to ten overall. And then it does go further and actually limit it based on the population of each of the city or townships. That transfer authority to us. And the county attorney's opinion, they felt that it was a reasonable use of the county board's authority to regulate businesses. And this ordinance would not impact any city or township that decided to keep the registration authority. So Waconia, as an example, they could adopt their own ordinance and limit it to two, based on the one per twelve thousand five hundred. Or they could not adopt the ordinance, and they could issue an unlimited number, as many as they want. This ordinance only, by statute, this ordinance only impacts the cities or the townships that transfer that registration authority to Carver County. And with that, the motion, the request for board action is the motion to adopt the county ordinance that would limit the cannabis retail businesses based on one per twelve thousand five hundred residents. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Fishman? Questions? Seeing no questions, is there a motion?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Fahy to adopt the motion, to adopt the county ordinance to limit the cannabis retail business based on one per twelve thousand five hundred residents. Any discussion on that motion? Commissioner Workman.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this is a pretty big deal. I don't see what looks like cannabis retail faces in this crowd jumping up to the podium, but I'm just wondering if there's. But I'm just wondering if there's any, who wants to sell pot? Well, I don't, Mr. Chairman, but, but, no, this is a pretty big deal. It's a little bit forced on us by the state legislature. I know it fell under the, well, they're doing it anyway, so we might as well legalize it. But I think, I think the state might be in for some issues we didn't hope for. And so, but, so maybe was looking for a little more input, but.
Maybe it'll come later.
I'll, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Workman. Oh, we already had a motion. We had a motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Fahy. Any other discussion on that motion? Commissioner Lynch?
The state, they approved it, and then they, they're starting to draft the language. Do we know where they're, they're at with that?
Mr. Fishman, how long, how far along is the state?
That's the question we're all waiting for. Yeah, they're, they're, we're waiting on some checklists and some regulations and stuff. That's why I mentioned the, the earliest it could start would be January first, but we don't think we're gonna be ready by January first. So it's gonna be sometime, sometime in twenty twenty-five, but to be determined when it's actually.
Put the cart in front of the horse.
Yeah, they kinda.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Udoman?
How hard is it to lift this if we decide to revisit it?
Mr. Fishman, if we pass this, how hard is it to change our minds?
My understanding is we can amend the ordinance at any time that, that the board desires. But I would defer to the attorneys in the room.
Mr. Metz is kinda agreeing with you with that.
Yeah.
Just a general comment. Typically, if it's your business or your land, start from a place and do whatever you want with it. But given the unknown of what's going on, I think this also hedges that back, knowing the answer to that question, if we wanna revisit it, to start slow and see what happens and be prudent about it. I also know that there's a public health piece of it, probably embedded in Tom's comment about the state's doing this anyway. There's a cost associated with that, and I think this gives us an opportunity to evaluate what that cost is, and then if we wanna loosen it, in the future, we're able to do so.
Any other comments or discussion? If not, Mr. Minister Hemsey?
To that point, I think the cities could also amend what they're doing, correct? So they, they could say, well, we want more in the future, and we, they could take over the registration, correct?
Yeah, yeah. The cities either keep the registration authority or they take it back, pass resolution, take it back, then, then they'd be able to, you know, adopt an ordinance or not adopt an ordinance. Yeah, there's a lot of, plenty of flexibility in there.
So it's good local control there, and I think it's more their issue than it is ours, quite frankly. Because if you're a retailer, you're probably gonna wanna be in a city with a population basis. But I also wanted Dave to clarify, this doesn't put us into the regulation business, correct? Most of us read an article, I think it was City St. Paul, where a dispensary was busted for higher potency. We're not in that business, right?
That is correct. Yeah, the, the Office of Cannabis Management, there was a point where we thought we were, we were told we were gonna be doing that, checking for potency and checking for, you know, quantities and, and all kinds. It was like, how are we gonna do that? But that, that was the initial kind of big picture. But then they figured out, no, that's not gonna be good for us. So we are just compliance, age verification, like we're doing for, already doing for alcohol and tobacco, and potency and, and those kind of things will be handled by the Office of Cannabis Management. They'll be responsible for that.
And we know how well they're doing up till now. Any other discussion? Commissioner Lynch?
Only that I think we had a great conversation. I think Commissioner Workman said, said it right. This was forced on us. And not only that, but then by drafting this ordinance, it was, the, the townships can opt in, they can opt out. The cities can opt in, they can opt out. So it's not a, it's just putting a lid on it to see what would actually happen, because they're not even finished writing the, the law yet.
Other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. With that, we move on to three point two, a public hearing on ordinance number one oh eight two thousand, or two thousand twenty-four, amending the county zoning ordinance and zoning map. With that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Udoman, to open the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now in the public hearing. With that, we'll talk, call up Mr. Jason Melkey, our Land Use Manager. Mr. Melkey?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Again, this is a public hearing for ordinance number one zero eight dash twenty twenty-four, which is amending the chapter one fifty-two of the zoning ordinance and the official county zoning map. I would like to enter into the record the following. Proof of publication and mailing of the hearing notice. Notification was sent to the Patriot and the Herald Journal for publication on eleven five twenty-four. The public hearing notice was also sent to all of the ten township clerks, as well as the township supervisor chair. That took place on eleven seven twenty-four, as well as the city administrators within the county. We'd also like to enter into the record the planning commission resolution, which was signed by the planning commission chair, and that number is twenty four dash fifteen. The draft ordinance, number one zero eight dash twenty twenty-four, the draft zoning map, the draft planning, or excuse me, the draft county board resolution, and any other items that were part of the official record. Just for this particular meeting, public hearing, we do have on the back table, for the audience, if they wish, we have the draft ordinance language, the county board memo, as well as the draft map back for public viewing. On October fifteenth, the planning commission did recommend approval of the request as part of their public hearing. And obviously, this particular request is specifically for the unincorporated areas of the county. Each city has their own land use authority, which administers and enforces the, the land use regulations. The purpose and intent of the ordinance is not only to just update various language and policies that have been added and make additional amendments to the ordinance, but it is, again, the official zoning map. When we get the opportunity to do so, we'd like to update that with, with, if there's specific modifications or changes. The intent of the changes, it involved removal of some redundancies that we had in the ordinance language. We're always trying to fine tune and make it more user friendly, not only for the public to understand, but also for staff. So we did some addition and revision of definitions. General language, housekeeping, that's, that's pretty common practice. If we find things that we feel should be updated and modified, we certainly would take this opportunity to do so. The main focus of the amendment itself was to include state statute, you know, language, which ends up being new cannabis regulations that we are required to administer and enforce at the local level. Here's a particular timeline. You can read through it all. This was also included as part of the county board memo. We date back to August of twenty-three, when we had our first county board work session to, to discuss what was actually happening at the state legislation with the cannabis law and the discussions that were taking place. And as you follow through, we did another county board workshop. Once we got a little more into the details of what zoning, what the zoning aspect and licensing requirements potentially were gonna be at the local level. We did attend a township meeting on, on July ninth to provide them some background of what was coming up with this, at the state level and how it impacts the local jurisdictions. And on August sixteenth, the county board passed a moratorium to prohibit the registration of some of the early registration process that was going to be taking place at the state level. What this ultimately did was allow staff the ability and time to take a look at some of the draft language that was being provided by some folks at the state level, as well as other jurisdictions, and figure out how can we establish guidelines that are specific to our land uses and ultimately the responsibilities we have at the local level. That particular draft language was provided to the townships so that they could talk amongst themselves at their regularly scheduled township meetings with the intent of getting feedback to us by October fifteenth, which is when the planning commission held their public hearing. And ultimately, the planning commission recommended approval with, with the modifications that were made, additions, deletions, things like that. And today, again, we're here to do the county board public hearing with the recommendation to enact ordinance number one zero eight dash twenty twenty-four. Now, as part of the process, again, the main focus of this was to update the language to make sure we're addressing the, the cannabis regulations, the, the state law. But ultimately, we did some house cleaning, housekeeping tasks as well. And here's just a list of some of the, some of the main topics that we hit on. There's a non-conforming structure section in the zoning code, and somebody's ultimately allowed to basically rebuild in the same location, as long as it's no more than fifty percent destroyed, right? And that ultimately has created some issues with setback requirements for some major roads and the ability to expand those. So we decided to make it more restrictive than what we had. And ultimately, if anybody's completely doing replacement of a structure, they have to conform to the existing guidelines that are in place in the zoning code, meaning setbacks. If they need to try and still get a reduced setback, they have the opportunity to go through a variance, like anybody would. But trying to be consistent with establishing more, more conforming standards for non-conformities. We've had issues, I shouldn't say issues, we've had discussions, and some individuals that homestead a property, apply for a conditional use permit, a farm slash home-based business. And some of our standards for that require you to, you as the property owner or owner of the business to homestead and occupy the residence on the property. And we talked and worked through the assessor's office to find out if homesteading is possible for said individual. There's more folks that are starting to put properties into an LLC. And one of the requirements, as far as homesteading through the assessor's office, is LLCs cannot, by statute guidelines, homestead. So we're tweaking the zoning code language to include LLCs as long as a owner of the, of the LLC is residing on the property to help alleviate some additional variances that somebody might have to go through otherwise. Some lot standards we have in here, corner lots, two fronts, two sides, just clarifying that. Back in twenty seventeen, we actually did the floodplain ordinance amendment, and we found some language that was not changed, still referenced the one hundred-year flood. And the DNR's terminology is a one percent chance. So we made sure that we're updating those little housekeeping responsibilities. And there's other state statute references and other internal county code references that might have been changed over time. And we went through to make sure that statute and other ordinances are identifying the appropriate sections that need to be followed. Our one per forty acre density, you know, one per forty, if it's a parcel smaller than twenty acres in size, it's considered more of a residential parcel, and you're limited to a maximum of two acres of prime ag soils, based on soil maps. And over time, individuals that have created conforming parcels, meaning that ultimately want to expand upon that and buy additional land and consume more prime ag. So we're making it pretty clear that you can't continue, you can't create a conforming parcel with the intent of expanding upon it to violate the two acres of prime ag down the road. Again, clarification. Financial sureties with our screening standards. It's kind of hard to calculate a small strip for screening purposes and what the financial surety amount was going to be. So we decided to go with, with kind of a, a standard in the definition of a ten-foot strip for the purpose of calculating how much money we're holding until that, that screening has been established and we can return, return the surety. The third bullet is in regards to small acreage parcels, where it identifies you're only allowed household pets. And it, it references dogs, cats, similar, you know, animals. We get a lot of inquiries about chickens and ducks. And we've had to make people go through a variance in the past, which is kind of a funny situation for an individual to say, all I want is six chickens, and you're telling me I can't. So a lot of cities have gone this route of including small acreages in city limits to allow fowl, in, in specifically chickens. So we decided to cap, cap the amount at ten for small acreages. And as parcel sizes get larger, you are allowed to have so many animal units on a property. Eliminating the permit to allow personal storage structures prior to the construction of a home on a residential property, which again is less than twenty acres in size. This guideline has been in the ordinance for a long time. And it required an individual could put up a small two thousand square foot personal storage shed with the intent of building a home on the property within two, two years, and they would sign an affidavit. Some of those properties still to this day do not have a home on the property. So to eliminate the ability to do a personal storage shed by itself, kind of gets us away from having to deal with those after-the-fact situations. Somebody can still put up a shed if they apply for a building permit for the new home and the accessory structure at the same time. And that allows them to put up a shed prior to the residence, with a shorter timeframe to start the home construction. The elimination of some overlap in the language for our administrative fill permits. There's a permitting process that involves not only the land management guidelines, but also the dummy OMO guidelines. So we're, we're streamlining some of the requirements, so it's not so burdensome for the applicant. And we're clarifying the mining as an interim use in the shoreland section. Right now, it says a conditional use permit would be required, and we made the modification in twenty twenty-one that mining activity is an interim use permit in the ag zoning district. So we wanna be consistent throughout the ordinance language. And again, with, with the updates, we did the official map update. There isn't a whole lot to identify, other than there are two, two little areas that were impacting Waconia Township and Laketon Township for some floodplain update. And it was triggered based on city development. City development and the development activity, the, went through, the cities, the city of Waconia, that is, went through and did a letter of map revision to, to scale back some of the floodplain based on the development activity and the development in general that took place. But it ultimately impacted some of the adjacent properties, which happened to be township, township parcels. It wasn't anything that created a situation where the properties in the township were now in, you know, the buildings were in floodplain. It actually, the study reduced the floodplain area, which not only helped the city developments that, that were being impacted, that triggered the whole update, but it ultimately helped the property owners in the townships as well.
So you're saying shoreline is not, until it's mapped out, it's not really defined?
Mr. Chair, the, the floodplain is, floodplain is what we're referring to. Shoreland is, is public waters by the DNR have a shoreline overlay, whether it's a lake or stream, river. Floodplain is established based on areas, whether it's a floodway, flood fringe, or general floodplain where there's seasonal flooding, based on DNR information or FEMA information. So the cities ultimately did a letter of map revision to reduce the floodplain in the city limits for the development activity. And it, it triggered some review on the township sides as well. So the map, which you cannot see on here, but it ultimately, it, it updated some floodplain areas. And then this map, ultimately, we go and we do the municipal boundary updates. So any annexations that have taken place would identify, be identified on, on the updated map. City of Victoria being a big one, Carver, and a few little areas. City of Victoria being a big one, Carver, and a few little areas in Waconia. The proposed language that we have, obviously, it's derived from state statute and the state law, and that's all the three forty-two chapter in the statute. It's the adult use cannabis language. Within there, the the state has the rules established already. The Office of Cannabis Management is going through, as indicated earlier, the rules process. They have their draft rules, they've been out for review, that was done back in August. They take feedback and they try and fine tune. They cannot approve their rules until it goes to a special board. That has not been, it's not been indicated one that's actually going to take place yet. So technically, it's still in the review phase, review and development phase. But ultimately, based on the state law and the in the rules, counties have the ability to implement reasonable reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner of business operations. These performance standards that are listed here are all being addressed as part, majority of them, I should say, are being addressed as part of the state's rulemaking process. Knowing that the state is requiring as part of an application that an applicant submit, what are you doing for odor and vent in the ventilation? What are you doing for security measures? And they've got some pretty specific criteria with security cameras, fencing, how you mitigating light pollution. A lot of that is already being addressed as part of the state's requirements, and the Office of Cannabis Management will be actually overseeing that and will be reviewing sites at the at the state level. Our responsibility early on was, boy, we're going to have to come up with all these standards and guidelines at the local level, and that's not necessarily the case. We can, we can incorporate some of this into our language, just so it's referenced, but for the most part, a lot of it will be addressed as part of the state's review of an application, and whether it's a complete application or not. If they don't have some of the security measures, the state might not accept the application until they actually submit what they're asking for. Again, there's other pieces to a time, place, and other restrictions, you know, hours of operation, that that's pretty typical with any commercial activity that we approve, right? Whether it's a contractor's yard, there's business hours. In some cases, if there's a a retail component, you're going to have business hours of operation. Noise, typically, we just follow the state's state requirements for noise and what the decibel levels, what them thresholds ultimately are.
And Jason, just to that point, for reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner of business operations, just so business or a landowner just can't do whatever they want?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Fay, that's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
First and foremost, if they meet the state's requirements, the state will ask the local unit of government if we that we sign off on on the the application, does it meet our guidelines? And then at the local level, we have the ability to say it would if they went through the appropriate permitting process.
Mr. Chair. So Jason, could we be more restrictive than the state?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Administrator Hemsey, yes. My understanding is we can be more restrictive than the state statute guidelines and the rules, but we can't be less restrictive. This slide here is identifying the different types of cannabis businesses that have been identified by the state and that we have to ultimately be the authority over. The micro and mezzo business, it's kind of a multi-purpose type approval. The micro business, I believe you can have one retail location, and you can do production, the cultivation, which is the growing, you can do all of that. The the retail component doesn't mean you have to have it on that property where you're doing everything else. You can, you get the approval from the state, you have one one retail license, I guess, and you can try and establish that wherever, as long as you're complying with the local unit of government's requirements. Mezzo business, I believe that's where you're allowed more than one retail, and but a lot of the same other types of business activity, whether it's the cultivator, which is a grower, manufacturing, which is the processing, retail, sales, wholesaler, a testing facility, transporter, delivery service, event organizer, special events, which I'll get into some of these in a little more detail. And then the medical cannabis is probably at a larger scale, you're allowed more more square footage, more space. It is not for public consumption, the cultivation, the growing, the processing, but you're doing it for a medical purpose, which is at a larger scale. These here are the the cannabis regulations that we included that all requests have to follow. And whether it's it's you're doing cultivation, whether you're doing manufacturing, you all, they all have to adhere to the Office of Cannabis Management rules and standards first and foremost. We will be doing these, are proposing to do these business activities as interim uses, kind of follows what the state ultimately is, where if the state is issuing a permit to a specific individual, we with an interim use permit, it's either to a specific individual, property owner, or there's a sunset date, that's what an interim use does or allows for. Where a conditional use permit, as long as an individual is complying with the conditions that are in place, it just runs with the land, and it can go from one owner to the next owner to the next owner. So doing them as an interim use, I think we have a little more ability to review, and ultimately, the state is is doing that already, so we're just kind of following suit. Classifying most businesses, which similar to commercial uses as home or farm based operation, where you have to have a residence, homestead and occupy. And then the other type would be a large scale activity, and again, that's more of the medical related testing or growing, larger scale, something with more of a unique location need. We are proposing to restrict the cannabis and edible hemp retail operations to the rural service districts in the county and in those hamilots, the rural service districts, which we have six of them, they're kind of set up for commercial activity where you don't have to have a residence anyway. If we try and go the route of allowing retail in the just rural ag zoning, we would have to try and figure out how are we going to approach that as a home based business? And then it could ultimately be done anywhere in the county. So by by going the direction of the rural service districts, we're still allowing for the time, place, and manner. I feel in understanding is it still meets the intent of of what the state's allowing or requiring the the local unit of government, in this case, the county, to to administer and enforce. And as part of the special events, it would be a two day cannabis event up to three times a year, that would be on the same property, and it would be treated as a special event with the county board approval, no different than some of the special events that we've had in the past. I can tell you that special events, the state, when an application, it looks like when something's submitted to the state, they're looking at, what's your security measures? There's fencing that's going to be required around the actual consumption area. So they've got some pretty detailed and pretty specific requirements that are being addressed so the local unit of government ultimately doesn't have to try and come up with some of the, you know, really detailed standards.
Mr. Chair, if I could, are there going to be setbacks in RSDs so far from a residence, so far from a church?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Lynch, we do have that coming up in the next slides on each each of these topics. So for the home based businesses, which again, these standards apply to the micro mezzo business, the growers, the producer, or the the processing facility, so on and so forth, again, interim use, the state requires a thousand foot setback from schools. We, in five hundred feet from the residence, we decided to do the thousand feet from all daycares, well, let me backtrack. The state's requirements, it's a thousand feet from the school and five hundred feet from the daycare treatment facility and a a traction, a public park where there's minors, ballfields, things like that. We decided to do the thousand feet from all of those and include churches. Churches being identified due to there being Sunday school or religion classes, still being treated as a school. So therefore, we we identified churches in this, which the state did not. And then we decided to do the five hundred foot setback from a neighboring residence not on the same property. So these are just, again, ag zoning rural area. They'll have to follow, obviously, the state's guidelines with light pollution, minimizing that, but we ultimately have a section in our ordinance as well about minimizing light pollution, so we'll make sure that those standards are being met as well. Again, keep in mind, we don't know what the state's rules ultimately are going to be finalized as, so by including some of this in our language now, we're making sure that some of this stuff, some of the standards are being addressed that we feel are pretty important. The outdoor growing area, the minimum six foot tall fence, commercial grade, that is ultimately a standard that is in the state language. So this isn't something we've dreamt up, saying, we got to make sure we're, you know, we're doing a fencing on this stuff. And again, the whole point of outgrow, outdoor growing area, growing cannabis, you have to have some sort of security measure, and that's the reason why I think the state decided to go with fencing. And no business located in a shore land or floodplain overlay district. We included that, knowing that some areas can be sensitive in nature. And if the closer you get some of these operations to protected waters, there could ultimately be other impacts or effects that you're creating, so therefore, not allowing them within those overlay districts is a direction I feel is appropriate. The large scale businesses, again, these are the medical type, again, a in the ag district, interim use, no other cannabis businesses located in the property. I think that's actually a requirement in in the rules and the statute because it is a medical type facility. They they're not allowed to do other types of business activities. We would again do the thousand foot setback and five hundred foot setback, lighting and the outdoor fencing. One of the pieces that I did, I did talk with Commissioner Dagler about earlier is we did not, I think it was an oversight, we did not include no business in the shore land and floodplain. As part of this public hearing, if you wanted to incorporate that into the large scale activities as well, you certainly have the opportunity to do so.
For consistency purposes, it might be one way or the other, either take it out of the home and farm related or add it to the large business.
That would be correct.
So just let the rest of the board think about that as we go along, for consistency purposes, what are we going to do with the shore land?
The retail businesses, again, anything retail related, it'd be an interim use permit in the rural service districts. The business will be located on a two plus acre parcel. The lesson for that is if you think about rural service districts or any parcel, small acreage parcel, you have a building, you need septic, septic locations, and you need parking. When you start getting into a smaller acreage, you start reducing your footprint of being able to include all of that and possibly even some maybe stormwater might be triggered for your parking area or all your impervious that you're creating. So we felt a two acre minimum size is probably the direction to start with, and maybe over time that gets modified, who knows? Within the rural service districts for retail, we do the thousand foot setback. We did not include the five hundred foot setback from a neighboring property, neighboring residence, because if we tried doing that, we would ultimately be restricting the activity from the rural service districts.
And is that also the reason why you didn't add the shore land, because you already know that in the rural service district, the shore land is not an issue?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's it's not an issue. A lot of the rural service districts are not in a, well, I don't think any of them are in a shore land overlay district. But with that being said, yeah, just to make sure we're allowing, and it's just retail, it's just a store, it's not doing processing where you have other activities going on, it's just the storefront. The cannabis events, we decided to go with a minimum five acres, and five acres seem like a reasonable number, especially if you have a large group congregating on a property and you have your event, you need to have parking. Five acres just seemed like it would be a good starting point. Again, this is another one of those, there is no right or wrong acreage, but it seems reasonable and a good starting point. Thousand foot setback again applies, it'd be a maximum two day duration for open to the public. No more than three times a year on the same parcel, and ultimately, the county board would be approving it, as is the case with any other special event permit.
And you can't have special events in shore land districts?
That is correct, yes. During the Planning Commission public hearing, we did receive some comments and some feedback. Laketown Township basically just wanted to identify what they didn't like about the language, they weren't necessarily in favor with, and questioned some of the in depth, since the state has in-depth security plans and things like that, they they thought that growing should just be an agricultural use. I think the point to be made on that, because of the security measures that's needed and all of these needing to be regulated to some degree, not only at the state level, but at the local level, still continuing to do it as an interim use permit, it's not like your normal farming practice, it's actually a product, high security measures are needed, therefore, doing it as an interim use permit, since the state is issuing a permit specific to an individual to do growing. It's not like a farming practice where you can grow soybeans, cor, and you can grow what you want. This is something that's a little more specific in statute language and has more regulations to ultimately be enforced. And they ultimately did not agree with the requirement of the fencing. They felt that if a property owner was three hundred feet away from a property line, why should, why should somebody be required to do fencing? Again, that's just going to be a state requirement, the fencing for outdoor growing. It's not something that we just decided to put into our ordinance because we felt it was necessary. Benton Township, Hancock, and Dahlgren, they had no comments, but they did indicate that they appreciated the county taking it upon ourselves and making sure that everybody was informed and had the ability to provide feedback on the update process. And San Francisco did provide comment that just they supported the draft language, they know they're not going to be enforcing any of it, and we're going along with whatever the county was implementing as part of the standards.
And the other townships that are not listed here just had no comments at all?
That's correct, no comments were provided. We, at the public hearing at the Planning Commission, there there were no public that showed up for the meeting. We did have two township clerks that were in the audience, but they were just there to listen, didn't provide any feedback. We ultimately did, just so you know, to get the word out there of what's going on, we had all the information on the land management website page. We actually created a comment section that people could go in, provide comments on the language, and then we had the ability to check to see if there was any any comments for both Planning Commission and the county board. And we did not receive a single comment on on the website. So under the board's consideration, we do have, these particular items were attached in the RBA, attached or a link for you to be able to to view the information. It was a county board memo dated November fourteenth, Planning Commission resolution, which was signed October fifteenth, the draft county board resolution dated November nineteenth. We did include a length- We did include a link to the land management page in the RBA for the ordinance language. There's a lot of information, and giving you the ability to view it without printing it all out was the whole intent, as well as the zoning map, there was a live link for you to be able to view that as well. And with that, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this morning, we're here to make a motion to open the public hearing, which already has taken place, a motion to close the public hearing, a motion to adopt a resolution enacting ordinance number 108-2024, amending the zoning code, chapter 152, and the official zoning map. And I do ultimately have some additional findings of fact that we had put into the county board resolution that I think are pretty important to kind of help describe and identify the reason why we're doing this and how we're going about it. Number five on here, ultimately, the adoption and enactment of this ordinance is going to cease the interim ordinance that was put in place, that moratorium, so then the official, the official 108-2024 would come effective upon enactment. And with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm just opening up for the public to think about your questions if you have, but we'll start with the county board. Any questions? Commissioner Fahy?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank Jason and his team for the work, and then the meetings with the townships, and getting all the feedback, and the Planning Commission. I'm on the Planning Commission board, and that, on October 15th meeting, as Jason stated, there was no public comment, but there was quite a bit of discussion among the Planning Commission commissioners, so that was encouraging, they had done their homework, and we questioned Jason quite a bit, but this is the exciting stuff that happens at the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. And been involved in this, I went kind of back in the longest Planning Commission meeting that I've been to, Jason, and you can probably correct me, but they start at seven, and I think we went to 1:50 a.m. on one of those mornings, so that's where the fun and exciting stuff happens, Mr. Workman, Planning Commission. So thank you, Jason.
I'll leg wrestle you over.
Yeah, for all the due diligence that we've done, and all these code changes, and all the discussion that takes place.
That's even more fun than hog operations, confinement years ago. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Lynch, we'll go down the road.
Quick question for you. I too would like to thank Jason and his team, because there's so many unknowns with this. It's like the state is still drafting, and we're trying to get ahead of it, and, but the cannabis business, the fencing, there's a difference between cannabis and hemp, correct? So the hemp opera, always look for unintended consequences. A hemp operation wouldn't have to fence their field of hemp.
Hey, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lynch?
Just identified, explain to the general public, what's the difference between cannabis and hemp?
Well, I don't know if I know all the details about it, but...
Keep it simple.
I think a lot of the hemp product, hemp growing and the products that can be produced from hemp, that was a bill that was passed, I don't even know if it was 2017 or something like that, and that is a farm, that was a farm bill, so that's a permitted activity. Now with the cannabis and the new state regulations, and the growing of cannabis, marijuana, and extracting for oils and everything else, different set of rules and standards. So I think you're correct. The hemp operation, unless the state ultimately changed some requirement that that needed to be fenced in, would still be viewed as an agricultural-type activity. Again, unless it's changed in the state statute, and it comes down to the local unit of government to have to administer and enforce something. But the cannabis would be completely separate and on its own with the fencing and security measures and everything else.
Commissioner Lynch, that...
That's, and I think the answer to your question is people don't smoke hemp. What's the difference between cannabis and hemp?
You don't smoke it.
You can smoke anything. Commissioner Uterman?
I guess we don't make a standard practice or open up these to look at them. When was the last time we looked at this? The amending chapter 152? Do we do this on a rhythm, or whenever it's needed, or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Uterman, we did this in 2021. Hopefully, the ordinance language is all, and you don't have to go back and open it up. I'm assuming, based on the outcome of the rules, maybe at some point, something we have in here is not working the way we hope, and we'd have to go back and make some modifications. But we open it up when we can, but as part of opening it up, it is a public hearing with Planning Commission, and I mean, the process is, we're talking months.
Commissioner Uterman?
And then the chickens, they always come up. Seems like it's always an election year. I know Chaska is rehashing it, and am I voting for the galler, the guy that's on the city council, because they've got chickens. I didn't know if you considered flexibility on a half-acre basis, five chickens per half-acre, so it's expandable, not as rigid as 10 per acre and a half. I didn't know if you had any thoughts.
What's the cutoff, Jason?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Uterman, we didn't look at it that way. I think a lot of the acreages, once you get larger than the half-acre, you start getting into, you're allowed so many animal units. And chickens in an animal unit, I mean, that's the feedlot officer's role to come up with the calculation. We've had some unique requests, right? We've had alpaca, we've had llama, it just depends upon what somebody wants. But we just felt, you know, smaller acreages and what we've seen with some of the variances we've had, people don't want a whole, you know, 20-plus chickens, they're just looking to have something for their kids to raise, and it just happens to be on a smaller acreage than your normal egg-sized parcel. So allowing some flexibility, that's why we went with a 10.
I ask because it becomes a hot topic in the district that I represent. For city purposes, it does bridge the gap, but also, probably one of the most unique experiences I had this year is, there's an agritourism business just south of Duluth. You'll have interest in this, Gail, and there's 300 chickens, they have five tiny houses. So you can literally stay in half the tiny house, there's a piece of glass on the other side of the tiny house, it's a chicken coop, so you're sleeping with the chickens. And this guy was the first to do it, and all the neighbors are like, they didn't want it, they didn't want it. Now, five years later, there's like five neighbors that want to do it. And so there's unintended consequences, but I think through the lens of it's your land, you can do what you want with it. It feels like this is a nice step in the right direction to address that without going 300 chickens in. So thank you.
Top that, Commissioner Lynch.
I am, I'm getting some ideas here for the same with swine, Mr. Chairman, it would be fun to see the little piglets over there. I think, Jason, you've, you've done a really good job of re-explaining my earlier comments regarding this issue-ready-shoot-aim legislature who did all this. I've driven by Degler Farm Fields my whole life, I've never seen a fence. But here we are, we're talking about fences and security, and dear heavens, what it is we're growing, and look, I went to high school in the 70s, and I guess it was a different day for marijuana back then than it is today. But this is, in our Planning Commission people, we need to send them some bonus checks if they're staying up till 10 to 2 to talk about all of this. But this is a, this is a good issue for us to remain vigilant on, and I know our county attorneys and our planning staff and everybody are doing, and probably our sheriff's office staff, and I'm as libertarian as anybody probably in the room, you know? Do what you feel right doing, but I think this is, maybe not right here in Carver County, but I think in the state of Minnesota, this is gonna bleed over into stuff that we probably don't want to see. I did send the board an article some months ago about one of these raising facilities in Oklahoma, where a lot of people with AK-style assault weapons were guarding the joint, and I'm not sure I'm tracking what, this is big money, and that's why all the action, that's why the reaction from the county, and so, but just a couple of comments.
We're gonna open it up to the public for public comments, but for the board, think about what do we want to do, if anything, about the shoreland overlay district. We do have, it's recommended in the home and farm business, and not in the large scale. And it could have been an oversight, but for consistency purposes, we should do something one way or the other. But this is a public hearing. Anybody from the public want to say a few comments on this ordinance? Don't everybody run at the same time. Seeing none, we're back to the board, we can close the public hearing, and then, but I think we should do something for consistency purposes on the shoreland.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Fahy to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion, we are now closed for the public hearing. What's our wishes, desires?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, ordinance number 108-2024, which amending the zoning code and the official county zoning map, and then also to add that no business located within the shoreline, overlying district, or floodplain overlay district to the large-scale business.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Lynch, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries unanimously, good job, thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you.
With that, it brings us to item 3.3, public hearing on ordinance 87-25, 2025, Carver County Fee Schedule, and the adoption of the ordinance 87-2025 fee schedule. Mary Kay, Assistant Financial Service Director, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. I'm here to bring forward the proposed 2025 fee schedule in ordinance 87-2025. Included in the board packet, you'll find the draft schedule, including the changes that are being proposed, and what it was to what it is being requested, brought forward by the divisions and the respective departments. These fees are either statute-driven, or fees to cover costs associated with providing the services, which is allowed under statute 373.41. Unless the statute is specified for the fee, a public hearing is required, which we have entered into, and a notice of this public hearing was put in the Waconia Patriot back on October 31st. Anyone is welcome to bring up forward public comment, and I do have staff here from the respective divisions to help answer any questions that people may have on the proposed fee schedule changes.
And with that, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Move. Second.
A motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Uterman, to open the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion, we're now, as a public, we're open, the public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's Mary Kay.
Yep, and I can just kind of highlight a couple of the more larger changes that are included in the fee schedule that kind of have more of a revenue side, again, they're to cover the costs associated with those services.
Are any of these fees to make money?
I think, good question, Mr. Chair, thank you. No, we are here to cover the costs, we're allowed to, under statute, to cover costs, but it's not to...
I just wanted to make sure that the public knows that these fees are just strictly to cover the cost that it takes to do that service, not to bring in more revenue for the county.
Correct, correct. Yes, so within kind of your fees that you'll see, I did kind of highlight this also in the request for board action, but we do have elimination of a fee, that is within the library area for overdue fines, so that's kind of more of a larger change, you'll kind of see multiple in there. We also have an increase being proposed for the solid waste service fee. We do have in there, again, like I had mentioned earlier, there are statute-driven fees that we do include in our fee schedule, just for consistency, and so people are aware. We did add that deputy surcharge in there, so there is fee revenue included with that, but again, that's set forward by the state. And then also, another larger change was within the juvenile detention boarding, both contract and non-contract charge fees.
So a quick question by me, how often do you see an elimination of a service, or elimination of a fee, I should say, such as the library? We're eliminating, that's actually, I brought in, what, $30,000, and now we're eliminating that? How often do you recognize that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so we have had that in the past, so kind of going back to even last year, we did change some fees in the probation area, where we just, we eliminated some of those fees and stuff, so it does happen when it's kind of maybe the cost benefit, you know? And I do have Jody here, if you want to understand more why the fee elimination.
No, I was asking a question that I do the answer to already. Other questions for Mary Kay from the board? If not, this is a public hearing. Anybody wanna come and make a few comments to the board about some of these fees or lack thereof? Again, seeing none, back to the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Uterman, second by Commissioner Workman, to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, we are now closed. What is the wishes of the board?
Well, Mr. Chairman...
Mr. Workman?
It was kind of hard, and it was getting kind of late for me to track back to the data practices, policy on our website, there are references to page 10, page 11, but it appears in our updated version of our fees, we're kind of going after the people who want to get data, or requests for data, or probably Freedom of Information Act, is that what sort of is, because it's...
You want to explain the...
...plead throughout.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman, so yes, this was discussed with the board back in May, but yes, to kind of recap on that piece of it, I let Nick, if I misspeak on some of this, but it was some more allow for the gathering of data, so redaction, you can't charge fees for, but if we have to gather, we can have a fee associated with, from the least paid person that's able to do it, but I don't know, Nick...
Nick, you want to add something?
If you want to speak to more...
Assistant County Administrator, Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and I'll lean on Jennifer Tishy as well, from a legal side, but the Data Practices Act in state statute outlines what we can and cannot charge for. So really, with the updates to the document that was approved, we wanted to better reflect what's outlined in statute. And sometimes it depends on the individual's relationship to the data, whether they're requesting data about themselves, or general county data, how many pages they're requesting, so there's a lot of variables that go into what we can and cannot charge for. So I think in that document that was approved, we did a better job of outlining per municipal data practices, what we can and cannot charge for, and then this is now reflecting back to that document.
Jennifer, you want to add something, or Jennifer Tishy, one of our county attorneys?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I would add is, you can always inspect the data for free, so if there are concern, and I can't speak to the fee schedule, because I didn't read that, but I would just make a note of that, that the public has a right to see the data for free, set up a time to come inspect it.
So, Mr. Chairman, so what, we're not making these up out of thin air, are these following a state suggested?
How do we come up with these numbers of what we're charging?
Across all fees, or particularly the data practices?
I think the data practice...
Yes, and kind of how Nick had outlined... Yes, and kind of how Nick had outlined before, within that kind of policy that lays out data practices, it really is what you are requesting to. It would be if it's your data and also from the inspection side. So basically, it's looked at case by case. So when we wanted to present in the fee schedule, it was better to reflect it against that policy and bring those people towards that page on the website so they more properly can, based on what you're asking for. So like, for instance, I guess to give example with financial data, if you're asking for all the uncashed checks for the county, if you're asking for a lot more than what we just have available, you're asking for more specific details that we have to then gather more, then we kind of review to see how much it would take to compile that data for you based on how you're asking for it.
Are there any uncashed checks for me down there?
Not you, Commissioner Workman.
Just a couple bills.
Anything else, Commissioner Workman?
No, I just want to make sure, you know, that the, and I'm sure staff does, that the public has the same access rights to data here that they do down in Scott County or wherever and, and that we weren't just making it up. I do have some other quick questions, and I don't see, did Jason leave? I found it kind of interesting on the, and thank you for that answer. But in the planning and zoning, we just sort of added a three to a, a $50 permit. Administrative permit for excavating, filling or a driveway that includes, so it was 50. We just sort of threw out, sort of added a three. So from 50 to 350 for these permits, and I didn't know if somebody knew about that or that looks like.
Mary Kay?
Yep, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman, in the changes packet and more clearly shows, it was 250 and now it's 350. So it's a hundred dollar change is what is actually being requested. That helps.
Okay, well, on page 109, it looks like we just added a three on the 50, that's why.
Yep, yep, sorry, yes, it's from 250 to 350 is the fee change.
Oh, okay, so it didn't mean that there wasn't a number there, it means that it was a different number, okay. Mr. Chairman, I was going to talk very briefly about the solid waste fee. I've never been a real big fan of how or why. We need, we always needed to break this fee out a, a long time ago. It used to be to subsidize waste processing and other, other things. And I think it's a $2 fee increase. We, we are, we are technically charging a little bit more, but the county is doing a little bit less. So we're trying to kind of get out of the business a little bit. We don't really want people to bring their cardboard to us. We, you know, we're no longer doing composting, so the fee is kind of going up, but what we're, want to do is kind of going down. And I think this would be a great work session topic for 2025. Commissioner Degler, I hope you'll join us.
I'm gonna miss it.
No. And you're going to see the cannabis through in 2025 too, so. Not done there, so. But, but I just wanted to say that, that I'm not sure I, I'm grasping exactly where we want to go with solid waste.
Do you want Brad to maybe expound on a little bit, Brad?
No, I, I think we can talk about it in the future, in February or March or something.
Let me know when that happens, so I, maybe I'll sit in the office.
Yes, when your fence, when your fence starts going up around your field with that, but.
Cannabis field.
And so I, I, we should really just sort of get back to that and, and the global, what's going on globally in Minnesota and what's, because it's, we just sort of sat for a long time and, you know, we're raising the fee, but we don't want to, we don't want to do maybe more. I did have a quick question on, I lost it. On page 116, the cannabis retailer initial registration is 500 bucks. But if I'm going to renew it, it's a thousand. It seems like that should be.
Oh, that, we just talked about that earlier today, but that's a good point.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Workman, I actually had the same question and actually had Dave Fishman pull it up for me because it seemed odd that the renewal was more expensive. But that is truly what it states. So that is not something we are setting as a fee, that's the.
Mr. Fishman? You want to explain? You explained it to me well earlier.
Didn't write the legislation, but I think I understood that they, the initial fee, they're not in business yet, so they, it's a smaller amount, even though it's more work for county staff on the initial application. But once they're up and running, now they're, they're an operating business, they're making money. So then they charge more for it, and we actually have less work to do, so it works out for us. But it, it's based on the statute.
If Mr. Workman takes out the initial one and then he has his wife file, file another one for the next year, would that be still in 500 bucks instead of a thousand?
I think, I think it would be, each one would be $500, yeah, so you could, and your kids.
Well, I mean, Commissioner Degler, you did ask if the county is making money, and this would seem to be a little bit of a grab, the way Mr. Fishman said it a little bit, and it's not your fault, state grab on.
Yeah.
Well, now you're making money.
Yeah, I don't think we're making money, I think we're just losing less.
Okay, I would expect that, that answer.
But it is based on state statute, Mr. Chair.
And, and lastly, Dave, good, good that you're there, the, the license centers, the deputy surcharge per transaction, we're adding a dollar. What?
Was that a?
That's also state statute, we're just updating our fee schedule.
Yearly.
That, that, Mr. Chair and Mr. Workman, that was a fee that the legislature put in place that goes to the deputies that are actually completing the transaction. So that's not going to the state, that, that dollar just comes to license centers. We believe it's temporary, our understanding is, is temporary and it will be changed once they do the online revenue sharing, that, that they had a, a committee study and is making a recommendation that's coming to the legislature in early 2025. And the thought is that, it was, so it's an interim measure to give the license centers more money. But we expect it to be replaced by the online revenue sharing.
Was that a legislative priority that we kind of encouraged?
Yeah, yeah, ah, yes, it is, yeah, yes, it was, yeah.
Was, yeah. Commissioner Workman.
So that, but this is a dollar surcharge that stand alone from anything else we were doing.
That's correct, yeah.
And they thought that was pretty generous.
Yeah. I should, Mr. Chair and Mr. Workman, they did, they did also increase fees on a license, driver's licenses and motor vehicle transactions, they made some pretty substantial increases that went into effect October of 2023. So we did benefit from those, but the revenue sharing that they're, that, that the committee, they decided to take another year to study that, so that's going to be coming back in 2025. And in the interim, they added that dollar just to give a little bit more to the license centers.
So I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, any other questions? If not, we have, no, we don't have, we don't have a motion yet. Is there, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the resolution approving 2025 County Fee Schedule and Ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, Mary Kay.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to recess as the county board and convene as the county ditch board.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Urdeman to adjourn as the county board and re, I should say, recess as the county board and reconvene as the ditch board. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion, we're now acting as the ditch board. Mr. Fishman.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I actually forgot, when we talked this morning, you asked me about ditches and I forgot this was on the agenda. The, each year, we, the ditch authority looks at the balances in our accounts for the various ditches. All ditch activities and projects and, and maintenance requests, anything that's being paid for out of the ditches is, is spread over the benefiting property owners. And this year, we're recommending one assessment in joint ditch. Three, okay, thank you.
3A.
3A, yes, thank you. It was a, a cleanout project that was done by Sibley County back in 2023. It was a 30, 30 some, 32, $33,000 bill that we paid, and now we're assessing that back. Also, I talked with a ditch inspector, Mike Juanes, and he has a project that he's in the process of now completing. It'll be done in 2025. So we're adding that together, and then somebody wants to do some tree spraying in 2025. So we added that all together, divided it by two, and decided we're recommending spreading that over two years to the benefiting property owners. So the, the recommendation, you see in your packet.
Okay, and just to expound on that, they pay it all upfront? Or can, do we allow them to spread it out multiple years?
I, I believe that they have that ability, but that, that's the redetermination of benefits where we actually formally do that. This would be informal process. I, I think actually the, it's probably just, we spread it over two years so that allows it to, to spread it out.
Going to make sure that it was easy enough for the landowners to pay their portion of that bill. Any other questions for Mr. Fishman? If not, is there a motion, looking for a motion to approve three, joint ditch, 3A ditch assessment of $17,550 for '25 and '26?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Urdeman, second by Commissioner Fahy. Any discussion on that motion? Just a discussion on that, the motion is for the ditch assessment of 17,000 for '25 and '26. Is that the total of 17,5 for those two years? Or is that 17,5 for '25 and another 17 for '26?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's, thank you for clarifying, that is the latter, it is 17,000 for both '25 and for '26.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, so that's a 34, $35,000 bill.
Yep, that's correct.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, yeah, motion carries unanimously. With that, we come to, we need a motion to adjourn as a ditch and reconvene as the county board.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Fahy to adjourn as the county ditch and reconvene as the county board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we now are acting again as the county board. Administrator Hemsley.
Just a quick question, board members, a hot apple cider event this afternoon, the Employee Club is holding. Good day for that. Is it 2 o'clock to 3 o'clock, does that run? A couple of you want to help serving, thank you, was that you JP and Commissioner Lynch?
I'm going to try and get there too.
So, so we'd like, like to only have two per half hour, so, so who wants to go at 2 o'clock? JP and Tim, you want to show up at 2:30?
If you need me.
Yeah, be helpful, well, it's up to you. We'll have servers, but it's kind of nice if you want to show up, appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
And with that, we need a motion to adjourn. Oh, and when we adjourn, we're going to enter into closed session for labor negotiations as outlined in Minnesota Statute 13D.03 subsection 1 that allows a public entity to enter into closed session to plan and discuss labor negotiations.
Mr. Chair, just clarification, we're asking you not to adjourn until after the closed session.
Really?
That's a quirky one, I did get a legal opinion on that.
I want the legal opinion.
We've discussed that, Mr. Chairman and board members, and they, that's, that's the approach we want to take.
Okay, so we are, what are we going, recessing until after the closed session? So with that, we don't need a motion, we're just going to recess until after the labor negotiations, and then we will adjourn the meeting after that. So thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I was just kind of wondering, we have a commissioner-elect here, is that something that she could observe or no?
No.
Okay.
You're lucky.
In January.